I'm sorry, I can't assist with that request.
But if you provide the audio content you'd like me to work with, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you.
I love the bridge photo.
I do too. It's nice to have a change of scene. We were hoping to have an event out there before the pandemic. And with the history center and county government cooperating have a dinner on the bridge.
Oh, wow.
And with some entertainment and other attractions. The bridge is very helpful to Oliver winery. Because they have fields that they reach crossing this bridge. And when it was out of commission for so long, they had to have a very long detour to get to their field.
I thought you were gonna say they used a little boat.
No, not with tractors.
Okay, let's see. Well, we have a quorum, but not quite everyone is here.
That we expect to be here, right?
I think Council Crossley needs promoted.
She just jumped in. Yeah, and so did Jeff McKim. They both just appeared in the attendance.
They appeared.
We also need to promote Megan Miller, please.
I've been promoted.
What title would you like us to use tonight, Jeff?
And there's Jennifer. Okay.
And the flag.
And the flag. Well, that's a good sign that we should get started. So, welcome everyone to our meeting of, let's see, it's the regular session for February and it's Tuesday, February 8th. And we are calling to order the county council. I would like to call a roll to make a record of everyone who is present. Counselor Deckard. Counselor Iverson. Counselor Hock. Not yet. Counselor McKim. Counselor Munson.
I need to say that Counselor Crossley, we need, you need to figure out your video. Otherwise, we can't count your votes. Because we have to be able to see you.
Got it. Okay. I'm working on it. I'm sorry. I don't know what's going on.
You need to maybe exit.
I love the bridge photo.
I do too. It's nice to have a change of scene. We were hoping to have an event out there before the pandemic. And with the History Center and County Government cooperating have have a dinner on the bridge.
Oh, wow.
And with some entertainment and other attractions. The bridge is very helpful to Oliver Winery. Because they have fields that they reach crossing this bridge. And when it was out of commission for so long, they had to have a very long detour to get to the, get to their fields.
I thought you were gonna say they used a little boat.
No, not with tractors.
Okay, let's see. Well, we have a quorum, but not quite everyone is here.
That we expect to be here, right?
I think Counselor Crossley needs promoted.
She just jumped in, yeah, and so did Jeff McKim. They both just appeared in the attendance.
They appeared.
They appeared.
We also need to promote Megan Miller, please.
I've been promoted.
Good.
What title would you like us to use tonight, Jeff?
And there's Jennifer, okay.
And the flag.
And the flag. Well, that's a good sign that we should get started. And so, welcome everyone to our meeting of, let's see, it's the regular session for February and it's Tuesday, February 8th. And we are calling to order the County Council. I would like to call a roll to make a record of everyone who is present. Counselor Deckard.
Here.
Counselor Iverson.
Here.
Counselor Hawk. Not yet. Counselor McKim.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor Crossley.
Here.
Fantastic.
I, I need to say that Counselor Crossley, we need, you need to figure out your video. Otherwise, we can't count your votes. Because we have to be able to see you.
Got it, okay. I'm working on it. I'm sorry, I don't know what's going on.
You need to maybe exit and come back.
We don't have a vote for a little while, so you've got some time.
Yeah, so that, yeah.
Did that, does that law actually apply now, or is it only after the emergency declaration is over?
Um, well, we might need to consult with Dave Schilling, but I thought we had to be able to at least see you as well when we take a vote when we're doing viral.
Yeah, I, I thought that the, that applied to the hybrid type meeting, but as long as you're under the old regime, I think you're fine.
Okay. I'm sorry about that.
That's good.
No, we.
Question.
Keep us on our toes. Okay. Now, let me just check, has Counselor Hawk joined us? Want to just make sure I don't miss that. No, I don't see her yet, so we'll keep an eye out. But let's proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is one nation under God.
Thank you. Now we are on to public comment for items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone wishing to make a public comment?
By the way, it does appear that Counselor Hawk has arrived.
Fantastic, there she is. Welcome, Counselor Hawk. And we do have someone raising their hand. Oh, it's Eric Spoonmore. Welcome, Eric. Need to unmute.
We can't hear you. Sorry, I, I am so sorry, my Zoom is extremely sluggish here tonight, so thanks for bearing with me on that. Good evening, Council, so everybody can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Eric Spoonmore, President, Chamber of Commerce, thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening. I wanted to give you a quick update on some legislation currently circulating in the State House, the chamber's tracking and what impact is here in Monroe County. So Senate Bill 390 recently passed the Senate. And this bill has generated some concern within our business community, and I'd imagine it may be concerning to the County Council as well. I believe you all have discussed it at least once before. So among some other things, this legislation would essentially put an expiration of somewhere between 20 to 30 years on the existing Monroe County Food and Beverage Tax. And as you can imagine, this would cause some real problems for any future convention center expansion plans, because as you know, that revenue stream will be needed for future operations and renovations of the convention center. Incidentally, it is kind of interesting that the legislation being considered has exempted three other communities that have food and beverage taxes here in Indiana, but Monroe County is not one of them. So we're certainly concerned by the potential passage of this legislation. And I have been on the phone with legislators throughout the day to share the chamber's concerns. Of course, we can use all the help we can get with these kind of things. And I wanted to be sure that we brought this to your attention here tonight, so that you can also contact our state representatives, should you share some of these same concerns as our tourism and hospitality communities do. So my understanding is that the bill has been referred to the House and it will be taken up there as early as next week, so time is of the essence. I know that you're all very connected to our elected state leaders and they would be happy to take your input on this matter. So anyway, thanks so much for all that you do. Hope you all have a great meeting tonight. Take care and we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, Eric. We have another hand raised from Kathy Smith, our auditor. And are you wanting to do public comment?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, so what I was wondering for, Eric got too far off. Eric, are you wanting someone to come up and testify when, when the House picks it up? Because I could do that. Did he get off? Well, anyway, you know, I don't want to lose revenue for the county. So if you guys would like me to put a close watch on that bill and try to go up and testify against it, so it doesn't hurt. Is that what you were gonna say, Marty? I can't hear you, but we could carpool.
Yeah, let me, let me know if you're heading up there, Auditor Smith. I'd, I'd be happy to join you too, so. Yeah, any help that we can get, we would certainly appreciate. And you're, you're our elected leaders here, and we know that you're very connected with those folks up there, so really appreciate any assistance.
And I, may I, may I speak to that?
Um, yes, of, of course you can. I'd also like to first ask, though, that Jennifer Crossley be promoted again. She is, needs to rejoin. Go ahead, Counselor Hawk.
Yes, there's several bills up there. That's not the only one of concern, of course. Senate, the Senate bill moving through right now having to do with annexation. There's a lot of people very interested in that. There's another one going through criminal justice having to do with level six felony, level six, that could make a big difference in financing and so forth. But the other thing, to, to come back to the food and beverage tax as well as the innkeeper's tax, not only does it have, it will have an automatic sunset, only because we didn't have an automatic sunset on ours, you remember. There's no like time, you know, we didn't put anything in our legislation. But, but more to the point is that they want, the state wants to see exact uses that we have made use of those dollars. So those people on those boards and looking at those dollars have to be coming up with the list and being prepared to turn that, and that should be happening anyway. So, yes, I, I had hoped that we would start getting more information about what's going on at the state. I watch it every day. But we can't see everything. That we paid somebody to be looking at it for us.
That is true. Maybe we can get an update on that at some point. Is there any other, well, are there any other comments on this topic from Council? I don't wanna cut anyone off who wanted to jump in. Seeing then, are there any other public comments for items not on our agenda this evening? Okay. We'll find my way slowly back to the agenda. Okay, next is the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's agenda? Do not see anything, so we will move on then to item number five, which is department updates. Do we have any departments that wish to provide an update at this time? Okay. We have two, okay. Ms. Cottle from our Health Department, welcome.
Thank you, and I will be very quick. I just wanted to give a quick update on kind of where we are with our COVID numbers. Certainly, transmission is still very high. We're very concerned about it. But also wanted to share some good news. You know, I, I try to be that optimistic person that's looking for those glimmer of hopes and the state is really reporting that as a state, our numbers are starting to come back down. You're probably aware that the northern part of the state had this surge with Omicron first. Their numbers soared first, and so the southern part of the state is starting to decrease, but not as much as the northern part of the state yet. And it's really appears, and I want to be careful with, you know, what's happening. We'll have to watch the, watch what happens over the next several weeks, but it does appear that we're doing what other states, other countries have seen with Omicron is a very sharp rise in cases and then a pretty sharp decrease. So we're hoping that that is on the horizon and that's what we're seeing. It will take several weeks to actually confirm that. But there, again, transmission is still high at the moment, or positivity rates are still high. We still have some counties, I think it is 28 counties have positivity rates over 30%. So we are not by any means out of this. But seven counties, and this was just a report that was pulled the other day, are under 20%. And we are hovering right around that 20% mark. And most of, most of those counties who are doing better are in the northern part of, you know, the state. So again, it, the lower part of the state is kind of lagging behind, but we are among the better counties, if you're looking at kind of where we are. So some sharp decreases. Now, with last week's snow and the closure of lots of testing sites, you know, this week's numbers are probably gonna look better than they truly are. There, and again, they're still high, we're still gonna be in red, you know, we're not gonna see anything that significant. But we'll want to see the next week or two what really happens. So I just wanted to give you a glimmer of good news.
Thank you so much. It's nice to hear that we might be seeing a glimmer at the end of the tunnel. Are there any questions for Ms. Cottle before we move on? Okay, thanks again. I really appreciate you taking the time. Kathy Smith, our auditor, welcome.
Hi, Council, again. So this is what I have left to process for annexation. This is the, the last part of the last batch that the city has sent me. I have 15 days to deal with this, but I did almost all of it today, though. You can't see the, you saw the rest of the office, it's just stacks of paper. So we're getting close. The, why, why, why I want to talk to you specifically, changed it a little bit during the day, because the mayor put out a press release, I don't know if you've seen it today, and I don't want people to, you know, start asking questions, start saying, hey, what's going on, what's going on? The, our, my numbers and the mayor's numbers are different, of course. And we, and of course I had Boris and Margaret Clemmons, who's, who's very involved with a lot of the people who are remonstrating. You know, sort of basically saying, what, what's up with this article and this press release? The mayor and I haven't spoken once during the annexation. He hasn't been over here to talk to me, hasn't called me or, you know, I haven't talked to him. I work with his two lawyers. And so Chris Munch and I have been passing all this information back and forth, and there's a certain amount of days for each step. So now they've delivered their last, their last deliverable, which, which in their press release says last Thursday, but you'll remember we were closed Thursday and Friday. So today, so yesterday was the first day that we got it. I worked well over half of it, and this stack is what I have left. Once we get through these waivers, then we have to go through, and everybody that we say has a valid waiver and it can be subtracted out, we have to go in and look at the meets and bounds restrictions of the, of the geometry of those plats, because some of them could be like 150 houses on one old plat with one three-page description in legalese and see if it really covers those properties. So if the valid, if the waiver is over 15 years old, I want you to know that I'm following state law. The press release kind of sounded like he really wanted me not to count those. However, when all of us elected officials, we all swore to uphold state, local, and the laws and the Constitution, okay? The state law says it's over 15 years, I cannot count it. So I want to be very clear with you on what my position was. So I will not be counting any waiver that's over 15 years. So that leaves all the waivers under 15 years. So once we get a good set of the ones that are applicable, we've checked ownership, we've checked all that. Then we have to go in and we have to say, what did this piece of property look like? Did it cover this, this person's house, that person's house? Because one waiver can cover 300 houses, right? Because it was a farm when it was, when the waiver was written, and now it's, now it's a big giant subdivision. So I have 15 days to finish this. We're gonna work consistently, hard as we can to get it done, but with COVID hitting our office the week before the snowstorm and then the snowstorm, I didn't want people to worry about things, because I'm sure you've, you know, you know we're off, you probably heard we had sickness in our office, pretty severe sickness, but we're moving on. And, and I, I don't, I don't want people to keep asking, well, are the mayor's numbers right? Are your numbers right? My numbers are not gonna be right until we put every piece together and we've investigated every single one in those. We can sort of tell you what we've vetted and we know are gonna count, but there's still a big subset of ones we have to deep drill, deep downer, drill farther down into and do a deep dive into all the attributes and all the variants associated with those parcels. So I didn't want you to think that we're, at the end, based on that press release, there's still a lot of work to do. Schilling and his staff are helping us. Matter of fact, we've had questions every single day, and I'm sure we're aggravating them because it, it is so, it's so much. But I want you to know that we're, we care about the constituents, we care about the taxpayers, and this is about them. It's not about the city versus the county or this group of people versus the city. It's not, or me versus the city. It's only about what the will of the taxpayers are. The people who own those properties and pay those property taxes. So I just kind of wanted the public and you guys to hear where we're at and give you an update. And that's really all I've got to say about that, as Forrest comes in.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions for our auditor? All right, well, thanks for the update and thank you for all your hard work on this project. I know it's a lot. Are there any other departments who have updates for us this evening? Do not see anyone. So we will move to council liaison updates. Are there any counselors who would like to provide an update on their department liaison activities? Counselor Crossley.
Okay, um, I am not too, too much of an update with the, in regards to the Women's Commission. I know that I've been in contact with Michelle, and she's really trying really hard to get people and we've been kind of messaging back and forth to figure out our game plan and, because we have some vacancies. I have one person that I'm pushing towards the application process. So hopefully they will apply here soon, but, um, again, if public is watching, which I really hope you are, please consider joining the Women's Commission and we won't stop until we get those filled. So that's all I have to say on that one.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sharing time. Okay, we will move on to the next item on the agenda then, which is requests for the state and local fiscal recovery plan dollars formerly known as the American Rescue Plan Act. So we are no longer ARPA. We are solar FERPA. And this is a standing item. I've mentioned this before, and we will have requests coming to us. We do not have anything specifically for today. We've gotten some clarification on the process. Originally, we had, I thought that we did not have to advertise for appropriating these dollars. But we do. So there's a 10-day period that we have to advertise in advance of having these come on our agenda. So we will have some coming, just not today. Michelle's nodding, so I think I got that right.
Yes, we have some advertised that will be ready for the work session, for the February work session. So you'll be seeing a couple requests then.
Fantastic, thanks. Does anyone have? Fantastic. Thanks. Does anyone have any questions on the process or how that's going? Counselor McKim.
Well, just which, what are we, what are we going to hear next? I know heading home has been pending for a while. Is there? Are there other requests?
The other request that we have received was from the highway regarding the brine. Enclosure, I believe. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I know it was from the highway regarding the brine. Facility.
Okay, and was that added to the plan?
That part I can't answer.
I don't know. I don't think that the plan has been amended, I mean, to my knowledge. My guess is it's supposed to fit under the broad statements that are in the plan right now.
Well, hopefully it'll be amended to include whatever it is we'll be voting on.
Okay, I will reach out to Angie regarding that and get you guys an email on that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Hawk?
Yes, as a reminder, we need to make sure each and every time something like that is advertised. And being presented to us, that it is clear it's a part of the plan because. We could, we could be responsible to, not we personally, but. The county could have to pay this back if we don't have it specifically the way we're instructed. So we can't just leave it up to. Chance. So I don't know, maybe county legal should be checking that out every time.
I think you're right on there. Any other concerns or questions? Okay, we will move to item eight on the agenda, and at this point, we welcome back the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund nine, one, three, zero, 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 zero. Syringe Services Program in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in the Supplies category.
Welcome again, Ms. Cottle.
Good evening. You have heard this every, once a year for five years now because. The Health Foundation of Greater Indianapolis has awarded us funds ranging from I. As little as five thousand, but usually the last few years it has been twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. So this is to support. The Harm Reduction Program and the Syringe Services Program. And it is for supplies. So just requesting that you appropriate it.
Absolutely. My pleasure to support. Are there any questions for Ms. Cottle? Okay, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have item nine on our agenda, which is the Prosecutor's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Prosecutor's Office request for new account lines and additional appropriations in Fund nine, one, five, nine, zero, zero, zero. Zero High Tech Crimes Unit Fund in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. In the Services category.
Second.
Welcome. It looks like we have Beth Hamlin here from the Prosecutor's Office.
Good evening. It's good to see you all.
Behind my chat pot is also our prosecutor, Eric Alafont. I'll move that there. Could you give us a little bit of background information, please?
Absolutely. This grant funding was received from the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council. For the purpose of developing a high-tech crime unit. I think we've been a couple of times to talk to you all about this. About the high-tech crime unit. The project will be a collaboration between the Monroe County Prosecutor and Indiana University. Most of the funds that are received are for the purchase and licensing of IT hardware for the unit. Staffing expenses will be maintained by Indiana University with the support of contracted service dollars in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred. Dollars from this grant. Six hundred dollars is allocated for the purchase of desks, chairs, and shelving for the office space, which will be maintained on the campus of Indiana University. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. Um, are there any questions from counsel? Yes, Counselor Hawk?
Yes, we're required through internal control to keep track of, of any property that's purchased, even, even with. Grant money or whatever. So have you notified proper people? To make sure that it's included, whatever you're buying.
That's our intention. We haven't distributed any of, you know, we've got some items that have recently come in, but. We will definitely maintain them with the county.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, since I'm assigned to the internal control, I don't want to miss that.
Fair enough.
I have another question of the prosecutor later when it's convenient.
Okay, Counselor Deckard, let's stick on this item and we'll go to you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate very much the prosecutor being here along with Ms. Hamlin, and I wondered if one of you. Might speak for the public watching. First of all, this is tremendous innovation that you have done, but could you speak to what is a high-tech crime unit? What does this really mean? In, in what you all do on a day-to-day basis, or maybe the things you contend with on a day-to-day basis?
I'm going to ask Prosecutor Alafont to field that one.
So say I'm happy to speak to that. Thank you, Counselor Deckard. So the high-tech crime unit. First of all, high-tech crime is any crime where you can get evidence from a digital source. So it doesn't mean necessarily that, I think a lot of people think of, of some of the crimes that take place on the internet. But really, it can be anything. It can be homicides, it can be any manner of things. And so the high-tech crime unit, what it will do. Is process digital evidence due a forensic process on cell phones, computers, sometimes it's even like fitness trackers. Any kind of digital device like that that may contain evidence. Can be analyzed by the high-tech crime unit. And we will be servicing a region that's about ten counties in our region. Right now, the only, there's only a couple of these units that are fully operational. That are kind of serving as prototypes for our, our high-tech crime unit. So the good news is I don't have to fully. Reinvent the wheel because we have some models to draw from, and this is a resource that's sorely needed. The nice thing about digital evidence. Is that it, you know, it, it's very valuable. It can both. Help to prove a case by providing communications about the crime, sometimes even video and photographs of the crime, those kinds of things. But it can also help to exonerate folks who are not guilty of these offenses and help eliminate suspects as well. So. In some ways, it is as good, if not better, than DNA evidence because DNA. Really only proves that someone was in a place, but it doesn't tell you when, why, how, and a lot of those things that you can sometimes get from those. Communications and photographs and things like that. So I'm, I'm very excited. I do think this is going to provide us some. Beneficial evidence in a more timely fashion in some of those bigger cases that we see here in Monroe County. So. Hopefully will help us get better results in court. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I had just almost more of a clerical kind of question. I noticed them. On the agenda that I have, the six hundred dollar amount is listed for IT hardware. And in the description, it indicates that it's. Items more along the lines of office furniture, and the only reason I bring this up is that you. I'd want you to be able to get the right things with the right line. So hopefully.
On the submission, I've got a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents. In line three, oh, five, six, five, IT hardware. And in office expenses, three, zero, zero, three, zero, I've got six hundred dollars on the. Paperwork that I submitted. I didn't look at the agenda. They are all in the thirties, so I can transfer within there.
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't think it's something that changes what we have to do. But yeah, it's different on, on the agenda. Something to note, I guess. At least on our end. Okay, um, Counselor Hawk, you had another question? Was it related to this?
Not about this particular item. I just wanted to get. Some updates from the prosecutor.
Okay, well, I think we can do that.
Do you want to wait until after the vote, or what are you going to do?
Go now.
Okay, I was watching today and the Criminal Justice Committee was meeting. And they were going over House Bill ten oh four, and the prosecutors were there. There were some prosecutors there to speak in favor. And so I'm just wondering if our county is in agreement with the other people who are there to speak in favor. And that had to do with that level six.
Oh, are these level sixes going to the Department of Corrections instead of staying in local jails?
I bet it's, it's an option. It's not, you have to. It's an option. The prosecutors evidently, they thought they could use it to negotiate to get a plea deal or something. To say, well, we'll keep you here, but you know, here's the plea deal. I, I'm just wondering if. If that's something that this county also supports.
Well, you know, I think part of our jail overcrowding issue, I mean, obviously it's multifaceted as we learned from our study, but part of it is that. If a level six felon is convicted and sentenced to an executed sentence, they have to serve it in our local jail. And that does put a strain on our resources. You know, sending that person to the Department of Corrections may give us another tool in those cases where we think that incarceration is. Is warranted. I will say that I don't think that very many level six felonies do end up with. Incarceration as their sentence, but, but certainly there are some that do because there, there are a lot of different crimes that are level six felonies. There's operating while intoxicated, there's batteries resulting in moderate bodily injury, a lot, a lot of different crimes. That fall into level six. And so I, I, I think that I don't have strong feelings. I'm not strongly opposed or strongly in favor. I just think that this is meant to relieve some of that strain that was caused by that change on our local jails.
It just, it seemed to me that one of the things that, that appeared to be in favor was that they would have a quicker access. For mental health care as well as drug addiction, depending on how long they have to wait in, in our jail before they could be moved forward. But thank you, and if you have other information about that, I'd sure appreciate hearing it. Because I, I do stay in touch with people in the state.
I do think that our Department of Corrections offers more varied programming for their inmates than, than a lot of the local jails offer. You know, we do have some resources that maybe not every jail has, such as the New Beginnings Treatment Program and a few things like that. So. You know, it, like I say, it may be another tool that, that we can use if, if it gets passed, but if it doesn't, I think that. We can handle those cases as we need to. Yeah.
Thank you for that information. Are there any other questions going back to the motion on the floor about approving the? New account lines and appropriations? Okay, and I think Michelle, yes, wanted to. Correct the record?
Yes, for the record, I did review the agenda compared to the prosecutor's submission. And so for the record, I would like to put in the amounts, the total does not change, but the detail does. And I do want that in the record. So. They are asking for in account line three, zero, five, six, five, IT hardware. One hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six, twenty-six, and seventeen cents. Account line three, zero, zero, four, two, tech services, they're requesting twenty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. In account line three, zero, 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 nine, training. The amount they are requesting is three thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety dollars. In account line three, zero, zero, five, six, contract. Ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred. And in zero, in account line three, zero, zero, three, zero, office expenses. Six hundred dollars for a total of two fifty-three, four eighty-eight and seventeen cents.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
That, those numbers make a lot more sense for those categories. And I believe if we have no further questions, we are, oh, public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Then let's please have a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have item number ten from the Public Defender's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Public Defender's Office request for a new account line and additional appropriations. In Fund one, zero, 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 two, seven, one, General Fund Public Defender. In the amount of seventy-two thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars in the Personnel category. And to simultaneously amend the twenty twenty-two salary ordinance by adding account line. One, two, one, four, zero, Senior Trial Attorney, thirty-five hours, SO Attorney B with a midpoint higher status.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hunt and Ms. Suffol are here from the Public Defender's Office. Welcome. And would you like to provide any information on this item?
Sure, I, Madam Chairperson and members of the council, I will try to be brief. We talked briefly about this at a work session, I think, and. Some few years ago, maybe five years ago, the Probation Department was awarded a grant for pre-trial. Services, and I believe primarily at the behest of Judge DeKoff, an attorney was included in that. And that attorney was then from our office. So the grant is really run through probation and Linda Brady and Troy Hatfield. Do the heavy lifting and we get the benefit, I guess. We have used an attorney in that position, not only to do that, but to do other work in our office. And we rotate the position. Since we use that attorney, it counts for our statistics in the state reimbursement program. And if we were to lose this, I think we would be out of compliance somewhat in that category. I really haven't talked about this a lot with people, but I. I probably have been negligent. I haven't really gone out looking for a lot of grants. Because I think if you obtain those grants and then you get used to them. Then they're pulled, then you're in a problem, and that's why we're coming to you now. I'm certainly. It, it certainly benefits us. We all know the money comes from taxpayers regardless whether it comes. It it certainly benefits us. Uh, we all know the money comes from taxpayers regardless whether it comes from local or. The state or fed, federal people. Uh, but still, uh, it benefits the county when we get a grant like this. I I was perturbed because whoever was administering the grant didn't notify uh anybody. In probation or us that it was going to be cut uh in this category because they had other applicants. And that's fine. Uh, they just could have let us know, I would hope, prior so that we could come and ask you at a regular budget session. They didn't. And as I understand it, the money that's in there now, and again, Troy Hatfield went. Uh, to the people and ask them if we could use some money that was still there, and they did that. And so that's why the what we're requesting is lower than what we originally thought. And I think the money there runs out in about a month and a half. And so if you uh. Appropriate this amount, um, we will use up the the balance that we have and then start uh on the county money. In the past, um, I've tried to also use some of what we call our supplemental money, which is reimbursement money. And uh fees that we charge clients, but we're up to such a level now that I think. The county general pays about one point three million and we through the supplemental pay about a million. And um, we're getting to the level where we're going to be spending more in that fund that we bring in. And I don't want to do that um very much. So we're asking you to appropriate it from county general. And um, I'm hoping that. We can get it uh straightened out uh with the other counties and the people so that we can get more uh next year. But I can't guarantee that. Oh, entertain any questions unless unless Linda or Troy want to say anything.
I I guess I would just say that um we're here, Troy Hatfield, Deputy Chief Probation Officer, and myself. We're here to answer any questions about the grant. Um, and also Judge DeKoff, our team leader. Anything to do with pretrial and and the uh the grant actually was awarded to the court. So she's our signatory for the grant. So we're just here to answer any questions and and to support this request.
Thank you for being here and um. Um, I think I'll see if any of uh my colleagues have questions for any of you. Uh, Counselor Deckard.
Thank you very much. I and I appreciate all of you coming back on this. I also appreciate the previous discussion and explanation on on some of this and how abruptly this really hit everybody. And was not, this was not why folks planned for their day, the day they found out about this. Certainly, um, wouldn't be, we wouldn't be doing all this or dealing with it if it were. I guess the question I have is, um, I know that sometimes things settle after tremendous changes. From uh state or federal agency and a policy is kind of been out there for a bit. Are you receiving any information about the potential for um future dollars? And for long term reevaluation and maybe this current process, I know there's probably no that this decision has been made. Is there any anything that you can say here? I know that that may not be possible, but any anything you can shed to us. I, while I agree with you, Mr. Ha, I'm always a little bit nervous about grants. Um, I'm also real nervous about what opportunities we miss if we don't go for those things. And I I wouldn't want to see this county that's had so much success with grants to 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 kind of reverse course on that. And so I'm curious from anyone if they've got anything on it. Um, and if not, that's okay too, but just curious.
Well, I'll just say first that uh we were lucky uh that Troy did reach out to the Indiana Office of Court Services. And asked for permission to spend the carryover to get us a a few more weeks uh with with the funding. And we were very fortunate that the answer was yes, so it saved us a little bit of money. But there the state hasn't said anything officially to any of the uh grant counties. And we're not alone in terms of this cut happening. And we've received no official communication. Um, and I I know Troy, he may have some more information. He sits on the State Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council. And uh, the state J RAC may have discussed this, but I haven't gotten any information. I don't know if Ju- if Judge DeKoff has is who uh from the Indiana Office of Court Services. But I certainly haven't, and neither have my chief probation officer counterparts across the state.
Uh, you know, I can say that it was not discussed at the last uh J RAC meeting, State J RAC meeting. There is a multidisciplinary uh pretrial committee across the state of Indiana. Um, we have not had a meeting since this these grants were released. Um, that next meeting for that that Judge DeKoff uh and I both attend is coming up this Friday morning. And I know this is item is on the agenda for discussion, so hopefully I'll learn more at that time. Uh, about the the status of uh future grants and and kind of a little bit more information about what happened this this grant year. Uh, Judge DeKoff, I'm not sure if you have more to add to that.
No, that's all I would say too, is that I've heard nothing and I'm anticipating that on Friday. This will come up and we'll be able to maybe get some questions answered and be able to share that with the council. Once it we get some more information, and of course, we'll do that as soon as we get some. But we haven't gotten anything else since this, since we had gotten this grant and then the amount of money from this grant. And as everybody has said, this is not what we thought was going to happen. So here we are.
Thank you very much.
Um, Counselor Hawk.
Uh, yes, uh, first of all, uh, Mr. Hatfield, it was good to see you in Indianapolis today. I I was watching and you testified uh regarding that bill. Uh, always makes me feel good to know that Monroe County's uh staying on top of these things. Uh, when we receive a grant that says it's a it's a pilot program. Let's just keep an eye on that because a pilot program, eh, there is nothing there that says they're going to continue to give us. When when we're successful with that and the other county see it, we can expect the same kind of thing unless the state comes up with more money. And when they're trying to move uh more of the responsibility back to the state. After they had moved the that level six down to locals, then where do you think they're going to get that money? It seems to me they're going to start cutting some of these programs they were sending here to the locals, just my thought. But I just think we have to keep a very close eye on it. And um, I appreciate you doing that.
Are there any other comment? Oh, Counselor McKim.
Yes, so did 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 I hear correctly that this this is a midpoint higher position? Was was the was the position already midpoint higher as funded by the grant? Is that the? Is that why this is being requested to be midpoint higher?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from counsel? Um, okay, I would just like to say that we're happy to um, you know. Work with you on trying to figure out creative solutions for twenty twenty three. Um, you know, I feel like, yeah, this, this is, you know, eh, kind of feels like. A whirlwind slap, frankly, when you're planning on something and they they kind of pull the the. The rug out from under you. Um, but in 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 my mind, I feel like, okay, good. Well, now we we're gonna have, think about twenty twenty three and what we can put in place and um and try to make this work for next year. Um, so to that end, definitely uh keep us updated on what you hear. Um, and let us know what we can be doing. Perhaps we can uh meet again at a work session. And uh, talk through some things and I'm happy to, I don't know, get creative. Um, if we can. Um, are there any more questions from others? Questions from the public?
I I have a question.
Okay, Michelle.
Um. Since there there is a reduction, has anyone made an amendment to the amount to be approved?
It was read correctly.
Yeah.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah, I incorporated it.
Sorry, I was on the phone and I just wanted to make sure Megan didn't catch it either, so.
Yeah, good to.
Thank you.
Good to make sure. Um, so no public comment. Um, we will go ahead with a roll call vote then.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you too.
Okay, we are now moving on to item eleven, which is our auditor.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request to amend the twenty twenty two salary ordinance. To add language clarifying the jail correctional center grid note section regarding the base rate to be used. For the Correctional Officer Union employees. The clarifying language is as follows. The base hourly rate found in the note section shall be paid for the first three pay cycles in twenty twenty two. For the remainder of the year, the base hourly rate shall be the amount reflected as the base hourly wage. Found in the generally applicable thirty five hour and forty hour grids.
Second.
Uh, good evening again, uh, counsel. Thank you for hearing this item. Uh, basically, what I'm asking for is that you allow me to to pay the jail. The jail officers, the small amount of difference between what was in the jail grid. And agreed by the Correctional Officers Union um of the WIS recommendation for their classifications. Versus the note that was at the bottom, which had an increase of two percent. Um, in it, that which is one of the options we were considering. It's a few cents difference per hour and it's for three pay periods because the mistake uh was was a clerical error. And so it doesn't seem fair to take back such a small amount of money from the officers for a very short time uh pay time. And plus the the work to do that would probably cost more, um, you you know, or almost cost as much. As the money that we'd be returning i- in the time for to fix this error. Uh, again, it's just a it's a very simple clerical error. It was in two places on the salary ordinance. One was the correct one, the grid. Um, and the other was a little note. The note is going to be fixed by this. And then we're just going to let them keep their pay. It'll be in the salary ordinance. So when when we get audited, they'll not, there will not be an exception for overpayment of that small amount. So please, hope you hope you vote yes.
Thank you. Yes, we've, um, I believe we heard about this at our last meeting, so uh we should be fairly familiar. Um, it looks like we have a question from Counselor Munson.
It is not a question, but a comment. And a thank you to our auditor, Kathy Smith, for coming up with a solution to what was uh an error. And we certainly do not want to take back uh money already uh paid to the correctional officers. Because that just doesn't make any sense at all. It's a very small amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Munson. The goodwill associated with this move is would go a long way. Um, they have a very tough job.
They do.
Uh, to that end, I um trust that someone from our office or your office. Will be in communication with them directly so that they understand.
Be happy to call him first thing in the morning or maybe later tonight, send an email.
That would be fantastic. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hawk.
Yes, uh, that was my concern because if they see that their check was higher and then it's going to be lower. They're going to think we reduced their salary. So I think, I mean, how, who's going to make sure that they understand what's happened?
We're going to get a small note, uh, explanatory note out to them. Um, so it will be a reduction. It it's going to be a very small reduction, but still, we don't, you know, we want to have full disclosure. We want to. You know, it's just a simple error of of a few cents over the their pay. Uh, it it was a per hour cents difference. Um, so they will see a little bit of difference, but we want to explain to them what what happened and why it won't be the same on the next paycheck. So it is for three pay periods, but we we're going to do that, Marty. We don't want to confuse them. We're absolutely going to send information out to them.
I I would, I would like to also um add to that. We had a conversation with uh the jail commander, Sam Crowe. And um, my understanding from him was that he was uh speaking to uh the union and letting everyone know. So they they have a heads up already on what's coming down. So that was my understanding from Sam.
Him in the initial conversation, we agreed what the, that it'd be one note to all the people, very simple language. Um, we thought of them actually first, Marty, I guess.
Thank you.
If you have another question.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, do we have, I mean, I hear you saying a few cents on the hour. About what is the difference in the paycheck?
Um, it was obviously less than a dollar an hour, so over forty hours. Um, it would be, you know, obviously less than forty dollars. Uh, I presented that information when I talked to you last time, exactly what the cents were. So for three pay periods, that's six weeks. Um, so if it was a dollar an hour, it'd be forty times six.
Every two weeks, so if it's forty dollars, it's a an eighty dollar reduction. Eh, am I?
Forty times six weeks, because there's forty hours.
No.
And over six weeks.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying whatever paycheck they got last time. The difference between that and the one they're going to get, because that's really all they're going to be looking at. So is it going to be about an eighty dollar difference?
It would be even less than that with benefits and um with, you know, with their taxes and everything taken out. So yes, it'd be less than, if it were a dollar, it'd be eighty less benefits, but it's less than a dollar. So it's some amount less than eighty dollars um with, and then benefits taken out, like social security tax. And I say benefits, but you know, the the expenses of payroll taxes.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Any uh public comment on the item? All right, I think we're ready for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, counselors.
Thank you. Um, we are now at item twelve and um, this is uh from our own office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Public Defender's Office request to amend the twenty twenty two salary ordinance. To remove the midpoint higher status from fund twelve, twelve zero zero, zero 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 zero. Public Defender Supplemental Account Line, one zero zero six five investigator and add it to fund nine one six zero. Zero 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 system navigator grant, account line one three zero one seven investigator. To follow the interdepartmental transfer of the approved employee with an effective date of one seventeen twenty twenty two.
Second.
Good evening, counsel. Um, back in November, you approved a midpoint hire for the Public Defender's Office. Uh, in their supplemental, and they have since then transferred this employee into a the grant fund. Uh, the system navigator fund, and uh we need to, they want that midpoint hire to follow this employee into that grant fund. And this is just to be able to uh allow payroll to continue to uh pay that person at the midpoint higher. Uh, because they didn't leave the office, they just switched funds, basically, is what's happened. So.
Are there any questions or comments from counsel? It seems fairly straightforward. Are there any uh questions from the public? All right, seeing them, then could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Absolutely. The next one is our office as well. And basically, I would just like to open for discussion the need for a contractual agreement with Margie Rice for legal services to bridge the gap while the legal department works on filling that position. And we've made some headway on this topic. And I'd like, if Mr. Schilling could perhaps fill us in and update us on what's going on.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to do that. Yeah, this proposed contract that's in your packet is based on the standard service agreement contract form that the county uses. And this contract would start from January 29th, which is the day after Margie left county employment. And last as long as the funds are there to pay her. The fund amount, the pay or the maximum amount that could be paid out in the contract is blank at this time, and that's up for you guys to decide, of course, what you might be interested in paying. The process for replacing Margie, we were receiving resumes until the 11th of February. And then we will start scheduling interviews based on the resumes we've received, and we've only received a few so far. And we've had discussions about coming up with sort of a procedure for dealing with hires in the future and making attorney assignments in the future. And I've prepared a memo on that, and I would be happy to circulate that to your council members tonight if you're interested in receiving that. That's where we are.
I think that we'd love to see that memo. That would be fantastic. And I'm sure there are some questions from counselors on the topic. I would just like to start out, though, by saying that I would propose that our not-to-exceed amount be $10,000. And I think that that would be plenty to, I would hope, cover what we would need from her. We're working through her new employer with the contract, so you know, she's being, she's charging hourly rates that are commensurate with her experience and has assured us that should we contract with her, that she will be judicious in time management. So that's my background and information and my proposal for $10,000 as the limit, just as a round number. Counselor Hawk?
Yes, I just think we should be very transparent and say what that is per hour.
It is, I believe.
$225.
It was.
$225. That's about 44 hours worth of work.
So it's a little more than a week and a half or something like that. And the other question is, since we have the ability to hire our own legal representation, is this our contract? We signed the contract. We wouldn't have to take this to commissioners because that's us. It's not the commissioner's choice. We can either choose to do it or not. Is that correct?
We, yeah, we have this going also in front of the commissioners. All service contracts under ordinance are supposed to go in front of the county commissioners.
Well, just in future, let us remember. I do not believe you'll see that we are required to take this contract to commissioners. We did the last time, just as a matter of being, you know, in an effort to be cooperative, but we don't have to because we can contract ourselves. Just like with Wyden or Shealy, we can contract ourselves. We're allowed to, by state. But it doesn't matter. I don't care.
I don't anticipate that they would have a problem with it, so. Counselor McKem?
So I'm very strongly in favor of moving forward with this. I am wondering if the 44 hours is going to be enough. That seems a little on the low side to me. I guess I would, I would prefer to, I mean, I would prefer maybe to go more with not to exceed $20,000. And, you know, with the, I think the understanding that she and we all will be extremely judicious about use of that time. But I think giving us that ceiling is important. That 44 hours just doesn't seem like it's enough.
If you would.
Go ahead.
If you wish to make that a motion, I'll second it. Let me see, we already have a motion on the floor or this was just?
No, we don't actually have a motion. This is just.
I just opened the discussion, so we don't really have a motion. And I would think the way, the process that I was anticipating was that we would discuss, come to an agreement on the general terms and then have it go to commissioners, and then we would approve. Is that what you were thinking, Dave?
No need, but whatever.
That's a lot.
Yeah, I mean, we could go ahead and get this going and have her on board because we have things happening.
It's retroactive to, would you say, the 29th of January? So we have her on board as far as that goes.
Yeah. Because, Wilson, if you choose to approve this tonight, it's on the commissioner's agenda for tomorrow, so.
So I, well, I will entertain a motion. How's that?
I move that, Counsel, I move that we forward to the Board of Commissioners the contract that was just described for the legal services of Margie Rice with a not-to-exceed of $20,000.
Well, I support the $20,000. I don't think we have to send it to the commissioners, but.
Well, it's tomorrow morning.
For purposes of discussion, I will offer a second. Can we move on?
Can I go?
All right. Are there any other comments or questions regarding this motion? Is there any public comment on the motion? Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item then is number 13. Yes, number 13.
Counsel, I move to approve the citizen member appointment of Nichelle Whitney Wash to the Library Board of Trustees for a term of four years, which will expire on January 31st, 2026.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on this item? I'm not sure who maybe has the best background on it. I was copied on some emails. I know Mr. Deckard, you were also. Counselor Hawk?
Yes. Could you tell me how, I don't think that we advertise particularly specifically for the Library Board appointment. I think had we done that, we would probably have a lot of people who would be very interested in serving. This is a huge, huge appointment. The person serving needs a background in budgeting and following the numbers because this is, you might not think that it's a budgeting position, but of course it is because they have a separate rules about how their financing works. And we don't vote on their budget unless they would go over their budget amount, not their, it's very strange the way it works. It's not over their levy amount, it's over their budget amount. I think that it's still the same way it was a couple of years ago, anyway. So how many people actually applied for this library appointment?
This was the only applicant that was forwarded to counsel. But it was forwarded by Marilyn Wood and the administrative person, Lorraine Martin, both from the public library.
Okay, so the library sent the appointment they wished to have. And did we go through any applications that we have on file now? Actually, I think I saw that Councilmember Crossley asked that question with an email a week or so ago, and I'm not sure I saw the answer.
There were some applications that have been submitted for other commission, boards and commission appointments, but not for the library board.
From what I could see on, when we try to see if somebody applies for something, it doesn't, there's nothing that says, here we have this opening on library, or here we have this opening on whatever boards or commission. I think we could do better. I think we need to do better about making sure the public understands what positions are available so that if they have a particular interest in one area or another, that they will be more inclined to apply. Because if you just say, we have openings on boards and commissions, I don't think you're going to get as big a response. And this is a huge appointment. So who, did anybody, that, like, did they have budgeting? This person have, I don't know this person personally, so does she have?
Well, the rest of us know her from our training that we've been going through with.
I understand. I took my training elsewhere, as you know. But are you saying that the person has great budgeting background?
She runs her own business and seems to be doing quite well, but I don't know any more specifics.
But thanks for letting me ask those questions.
Sure thing. Counselor Iverson?
Just wanted to vocalize my support for this nomination. Nichelle is highly, highly qualified and could do this in her sleep. There is no one more qualified to do this than Nichelle, and I think that we should move forward with haste on this.
Thank you. Counselor Deckard?
I also want to add my support for this nominee in that this is a small businesswoman. It's an employee of Indiana University, one of our largest employers in the community, tasked with, as an individual recruitment of students into our community that fund our local economy. Not to mention, this is immediate past chair and chair, if I have my memory right, from the Women's Commission that we appoint and we have impaneled, has expanded the operations of that commission tremendously. I'd also like to know, I do think that we need to continue to do a better job at recruiting more people to these leadership positions. But I would know, as far as my last filing check, four of you, my colleagues, who are very important and near and dear to me, have all filed for office and have no primary opponents, as far as I can tell. And for some of you, no opposition for the fall. Sometimes recruiting people to, which is a good thing for you, I'm sure, but sometimes recruiting leadership into positions is even as transparent as something like a candidate filing, will not always get multiple applicants. Here we have someone that has stepped forward, and I'm very happy to support the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard. Counselor Hawk? You're on mute.
I do have one more question. I don't recall this being a four-year appointment before. The person that is retiring now, was that a four-year appointment?
I believe that person was on for two terms.
Yes.
So, is that set up like we know when we're doing something that it's supposed to be a four-year or a two-year or a one-year appointment? I don't know.
Yes, it's all on the website, and you can go to the website and click on each of the categories. And then on there, it tells you the codes that are corresponding to those boards and/or permissions, which includes their terms.
Right, right. Well, you know, living in the past, we used to have, they would come in and we'd do interviews in the whole group. It would, so that was pretty nice, but that was many years ago and a lot's changed. So, okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this appointment?
I do believe she's been on there for a long time, sorry.
Counselor Crossley?
No, I was just going to say that I echo the comments of the colleagues that have come before in support of Nichelle as well. And we all know it is very difficult in this little, small counting of ours to really try to recruit as much as possible because we all are tapped into many different things ourselves. And a lot of the ones that we usually would want to tap into are already tapped into a lot of things, so much that they're tapped out. So it is very, very crucial and vital and important for us to try to to try to seek out new voices. Of course, as Counselor Deckard said, it is very difficult to find people even with trying to, you know, do what I'm doing with the Women's Commission. It's very hard trying to find people. But we also have to make sure that it is equitable for people to be on these commissions because some of the problems that we're running into is the fact that we have people that really want to be. But if we have, you know, meetings that are midday, like 12 o'clock in the afternoon, then we're going to have a problem, and then we won't have it. That being said, I would just like to say that I definitely support Mrs. Wash, since she is newly married in this, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Any public comment on this appointment? Okay. Then I would like to have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Fantastic. Now we are at item 14, which is the approval of the minutes. And we have two sets of minutes to approve. January 11th, 2022, which was a regular session, and January 25th, 2022, which is a work session. Do we have any council members who would like to change or otherwise modify, edit the minutes? Seeing no edits, then the minutes are accepted as presented, which brings us to counsel comments. Are there any counselors who have comments they'd like to make? Got a whole line. Yay. Counselor McKem?
Yes, just wanted to mention that the community lost a passionate activist and advocate for marginalized people. Yesterday, Randy Paul passed away. Randy was well-known to almost everyone who watches local public meetings, both at the city and the county. And just during the time I've known him, he's fought for bus drivers, for adults trying to learn to read, for fiscal responsibility in county and city government, for library employees attempting to organize, for abused and neglected children, for climate justice, for transparency in public meetings, for voters with disabilities, and for that matter, for all people with disabilities. He was willing to speak truth to power, and he was willing to make all of us elected officials feel the heat at times, which to me meant that he was doing his job. So the community lost a fighter yesterday, but also a man with a family that loved him. We mourn the loss of Randy Paul, and our thoughts are with his family.
Well said. Thank you, Jeff. Counselor Munson?
I have, I have a word of congratulations. And thank you to our highway workers and other employees who took care of the snow coppola that befell Bloomington and Monroe County. that befell Bloomington and Monroe County. And uh, they made it possible for us to uh, get places we needed to get when it was essential for us to get there. Um, and I want to thank Monroe County residents as well who paid attention to the travel advisories and and stayed off the street and stayed safe. So thank you, workers, and thank you, public.
Uh, thank you. Um, Counselor Iverson?
Also wanted to speak tonight in in memory of Randy Paul. He is a neighbor of mine, and his family is certainly close to many of those who live on Bloomington's east side. And as Counselor McKem mentioned, all throughout Monroe County. Uh, at at the risk of repeating all of the the things that Counselor McKem was talking about, I wanted to simply uh, echo that Randy always spoke truth to power and something that I learned even in my short time here on the council. And tonight I wanted to read a short paragraph from an email that he sent me on July first. I think that highlights that pretty well. He says, "Just as two wrongs don't make a right, two incomplete or partial inspections don't put you at ADA compliance." "Have a service to the party. I provided them with a how-to manual, which included all the information needing to do a full ADA inspection." "I could literally recruit middle school age kids to do these inspections with the estimated cost of pizza when they finished." "This is not rocket science. We can get this job done." "All we need is a good faith effort from those people involved." Randy, we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, Counselor Hawk?
Yes, it might surprise some of you to know that even though Randy and I didn't always agree on a whole lot, we were just remained really good friends, and I would receive messages from him. Um, always friendly, always friendly, uh, with suggestions and asking for uh, literally, he would ask for advice of me. This man, a brilliant man, uh, but he was just a charming, a wonderful human. And uh, not enough Randy Pauls on this earth, so he will be missed.
Indeed. Oh, wow, um. Thank you all for for those words. I I have a hard time even following that. I am obligated to remind everyone, though, uh, that um, at our next meeting, the um, work session coming up, we will be talking about elected official salary structure. Um, and I want to move this item uh, through a process to a conclusion before we enter our budget season and um, hence my relentless bringing it up. So, um, I wanted to mention it tonight so that you could be thinking about any items that you might feel are important to uh, have in terms of resources or knowledge that you think we should be looking for data, that kind of thing, to inform our decision-making process as we look at this topic. And if you could think on that for the next two weeks, if you have any specifics that you want to share with Kim, uh, that would be appropriate, or just bring bring it to the meeting, and um, we will have a facilitated discussion about next steps. Um, any other comments before we adjourn for the evening? All right. Thank you, everyone, and have a lovely evening. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Good night.